And she had on the form number three, our discussions. We have an item to discuss and take possible action as it pertains to the city's travel policy requested by Mayor Doucette, Councilman Doucette.
Yes, I put this on agenda because since your trip, well, mayor's trip to Washington, I've received a lot of call and text messages inquiring about the cost. And what I've done, based on our last meeting, when I asked for clarification on a couple of items, I didn't get an answer, so I pretty much couldn't answer a lot of questions, so I decided to start looking into why or what the council can do to resolve these issues with travel. And the reason I say that because council had amended the travel ordinance, and I thought it was fixed. And then since we amended this travel order, and we have had citizens to come before council and wonder why certain council members are expense reporters higher than the other council members. So that was one, the other one being why so much for one trip? So after checking all this out, I came to a conclusion that part of the reason is our process and procedures that we use. There's nothing wrong with our ordinance that we amended. It's mainly the process in which we enforce the ordinance and the understanding. And what we have here is we're asking, I make a request to do one thing, but we're doing others in conjunction with it. And that's why these expense reports are coming back with such a variance between council members. And that's also the reason the mayor's trip was at that cost. What we have to do is understand when we make a travel request, what we're requesting. If we request to go to N L C conference, then we will get a registration fee. The registration fee is going to be the same. Because we, all we have to do is reply to the individual we plan on attending. Once we do that, we got the same. Anything that they offer for that conference is included in the registration fee, nothing free. Everything is paid for in registration fee. But what has happened? When we attend a conference, we attend things that are offered during the time of the conference or prior to the conference. And that is what's causing the discrepancy in these expense reports, once they show up on the agenda and when citizens read them. Now, if we're going to go to a conference, that expense report should be based on a travel request. So any expense we have should be dealing with the conference. Anything that we're doing other than that covered in that registration fee should have been identified. So when the mayor trip was for seven days, T M L conference for three days is a good example. Well, when I looked into it, basically, what it entailed is the mayor attended meetings of the Board of Advisory or else a committee, one of them he serving on. And they met before the start of the conference. He traveled a day early and stayed a day later, that was two more days. Well, we discussed the travel. We said our reservation should be made so that we get there in time to register. And even if we got there late, we still are able to register in the morning. All conferences end at twelve of the major portion. And it's done that way so we can leave and not have to pay an additional day for rooms. So we should abide by that. But as council members, it shouldn't have, we should not have to worry about that. City manager, see the city secretary, I don't see her. What happened? Is she still on?
Looked like she's on mute.
Bring her in. Would you please get her in, please? It's important that she hear this. Okay.
Sir, I'm here.
Okay, we've been to discuss this travel, and I think a lot of our problem with citizens not understanding is because of the procedure we have had, okay?
Yes, sir.
And we must understand what we request and what we do. All travel arrangement is made by the staff. Council members don't make our arrangements. So when we say we're going to attend a conference, the staff puts together that request. That request should be what we're going to do. We should abide by it. They should set us up, registration, hotel accommodation, and transportation. And when they do that, they supposed to keep in mind our ordinance, which is designed for us to maintain and manage the taxpayer's dollars, so we should use it in a fashion to create the less amount of money spent on those travels. It's up to them. We don't make, you don't ask us when we want to leave. If the, if you could get us there in time for us to register, and then you get us out of there so that we don't have to pay that extra day, you give us that information, and that's what we go by. And that's what we all do. That's what the mayor did, okay? So the key is going to be us understanding what we're asking for so citizens can see what we are doing and how we spending this money. One thing I'm going to make a motion, and that's why I say possible action after we finish discussing it after I finish. But one thing we need to do, we need to start approving travel, all travel by council to any reservations being made. So if any questions arise, the council can clear it before then. Now all that, but citizens going to see now what is going to be the cost for these council members going on this trip. So if we all in line, they're going to see it. If somebody way out of line, they're going to see that too, okay? I'm not going to answer for any councilman, and I want anybody answer for me. But the staff is the key people that has to be able to know what they're doing to save the taxpayer's money when we travel, okay? So they, we don't tell you when we want to leave. If our policy, if our procedure, procedure is, we get there in time to register, and we leave when it's over that day, if that's the procedure, we don't need that in the ordinance. All we have to do is do it that way. If you tell me, hey, the N L C conference is going to do, you want to attend councilman do that? If I say yes, the next thing you should give me, it's a basis when I'm going to be traveling and my accommodations, and when I'm coming back. So that's the way we have to do business. And right now, our biggest problem, we get these expense reports coming before council after the trip. We, no, it's backwards. We should approve it before the trip, so when we ask a councilperson to let us know why or what they're doing, you're going to answer. Oh, we have not told you, say no. It's that simple. But after the fact, we got to pay the hotel, we got to pay the bills, so what we going to do? Now, when I say practices, that's to ensure that all citizens understand after this meeting, we've done things that every council member now on council is doing, it was done before. Nobody is doing nothing that has not done before. In the case of the mayor going early to serve on a committee, that was done by prime mayor with T M L. But guess what? That's not that conference, it should not be for the conference. Because these advocate groups, T M L and N L C, they ask people to join and serve on these committees, and they only take applications certain time of a year. And the reason they ask people to serve, because they don't want to pay for that hotel or your per diem for the days that they going to be prior to the conference. So why should the citizens? So that's something we have to address, and we have to understand. If you want to go because you serve on the conference, then citizens and everybody else ought to know. Because citizens and other councilmen may not say, that's what we want to spend our travel money on. Because these advocates groups, all the committees that you serve on with advocates group, you meet, and you discuss, and all of this come back to the conference. Those, they're the ones that give us all these sessions of what they talked about, what they derived, how they met with senators, what the legislators are considering, they bring it to us. So if we are attending a conference to get this information, then why would we want to spend more taxpayer money to serve? So that's why these things are different. So if you are saying that you're going to N L C, then that should be N L C, that should be the three days of the conference, and your registration fee cover what you're going to be doing and what's included at the conference. Anything else is not the conference. So we need to make sure that we don't start putting this stuff in the package.
Yeah, I have a quick question.
It's a practice. Sure, and look at anybody anytime, it's a discussion, so feel free anytime.
Well, yeah, I do, because I understand what you're saying, but I don't see how they could pre-approve. For instance, when I traveled last year, the only trip I took, I had to do Uber back and forth to the hotel because I was staying at an off-site hotel. So how would somebody pre-approve Uber when I don't even know back and forth, coming from the airport to the hotel, then going back and forth to the actual venue where the conference has been held? That was, I had to take, as a female, I wasn't walking that far by myself, so I had to take Uber. How would those charges be prepaid for a trip such as that? But I do understand you're saying getting it pre-approved. Hotel, I understand you said hotel, your flight, registration, but and a lot of those things that...
I got it.
Let me finish.
Let, let, let her block answer.
Those are things that I would not have known about until I got to the hotel, how far it was from the venue. Did not realize that the place was that far, walking alone back and forth to the sessions. Secondly, if you get to a conference and those, and you have classes, you're a part of the council, and they offer you classes that aren't aware...
What happened?
What's happening?
What happened?
Hello?
It must be our internet.
Councilwoman Moses, Councilwoman Moses, can you hear us? I think she's there.
I think it's freezing.
Can they hear me?
Yeah. Go ahead.
We can hear you now.
Go ahead.
What happened? So that was, that one thing is basically your... We'll rearrange that from the airline to the hotel. But once getting to the hotel, trying to get back and forth, how would those be prepaid? And then second, if there are classes that you want to take upon arriving to the conference, and you send that there's some classes that you were unaware of, that are going to be great for you to bring back to your city, and there's a cost associated with it, or are you saying that we cannot take those sessions if it hadn't been pre-approved?
Well, well, to answer your question, the first one is transportation. We're given that you can get in advance, okay, before you leave. If you travel without money, you can advance. The other thing is, they know where the conference is always going to be because they made your reservation in the hotel. They'll know whether you stand in the hotel by the conference.
No, sir. And I'm going to tell you that, you go ahead and finish, that's fine.
Councilwoman Moses, Kristy makes our reservations. That's something that we can incorporate and have her to do now that you bringing this to life. We could have them to start looking at that to ensure that if there's anything involved, we can do it. That's not a problem. All we have to do as council people, that's why the city secretary is listening to us, is tell them now to make sure to check where the conference is and where are they going to put us up? And ensure that if they don't have transportation laid out for us, that they give us an advance for transportation, taxi or Uber. But most conferences that they have for N L C and for T M L, if you're not staying at the conference, you stay in a hotel different, they normally run buses from those hotels that, wait a minute, I'm just saying.
I was there, sir, I understand what you're saying very clearly.
Well, Councilwoman Moses, I didn't bring it up for a discussion debate. I'm saying that we can have the city secretary to address the issue you saying, okay? That should be addressed, that could be taken care of, okay? So we still can approve this count. And now on that, but when you approve the travel in advance, it's not that you don't have no reimbursable expenses. There are certain expenses that are reimbursable, and that is one in which you just talked about, okay? So it's not that once we approve it, if you take an Uber, you get back, you can't get rid, that's not it. That's a reimbursable expense you're sticking up. Wait a minute, one more thing, hold on, Ray, I'm going to let you go.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Let me move on to the class, the classes. That's exactly what I'm speaking about. If I'm going to attend the N L C, and I pay a registration fee, I'm going there. If I go there and decide I want to do something that going to cost taxpayers more money, why should taxpayers have to pay for something? You and I all going to the same conference, and we all paying the same, but you elect to go to certain classes. Why should the taxpayer pay additional money for you to go to the classes?
Because if you haven't seen what I, if you haven't seen the same thing I've seen, we're not two in the, one in the same. So if I see something that is beneficial to what the area I'm serving, then I think that that class is going to help benefit the city of Port Arthur. And you may not think the same thing, but I may think that it may be, may be something that's going to help me in serving Port Arthur. So I don't think that everybody could sum that up to be where it's my thought and your thought, which I understand your thought process, but I'm not you. And so I would not hold me accountable to take a class because Councilwoman Doucette didn't take a class. I may see a class that I want to take that I think is going to be beneficial.
That's not what we, that's not what we...
That's what you're saying, you're saying that we're one in the same.
No, I'm saying that when you sign up to go to N L C, and I sign up for a councilwoman, I'm saying that they charge us a registration fee. The sessions that they have for us is what they offering. Now, I'm telling you that if I'm going to go to the N L C and I'm paying the registration, I'm going to attend the classes that are covered. I'm saying that I'm not going to go and do what I think...
But it's your choice.
No.
That's your choice.
No, that's taxpayers' money, Councilwoman.
Exactly, and if I think that I can benefit the city by taking a class, then that's my choice.
No, it's not, the citizens pay for it, Councilwoman.
And I've never heard a citizen complain about someone taking a class to educate themselves in an area that they need their education. I'm not going to sit there and make that with you, that's an individual choice.
That's why they ready to hell now.
Just like everybody else has, and that was not one of the issues.
Oh, no, no.
But I do understand what you're saying, but I don't think that city council, that people, everybody's an individual. I don't have the same mentality as you and everybody else, and I'm not that smart. So in that case, I might want to take a class that would educate me, that would help me out.
You're spending money, we're talking about, that's why they're complaining, and that's why we need to police this up, and we need to decide as a full council on what we're going to do, because at the end of the day, the citizens are tired of us saying we're going to a conference, and council members just say, I want to do this, oh, pay for this, pay for that, it's out. That's what they're complaining about, say it like it is, don't tell me, tell them.
I will.
I'm tired of them.
Hey, I've been waiting, I've been...
Go ahead, Ray, go ahead, Ray.
Thank you, man. First of all, getting to the statement Councilwoman Moses made about the Uber. Councilwoman Moses, I had the same, I had the same situation. My hotel, when I was in D C, was in Arlington, a good ways away from the hotel that was having a conference. I took a taxi, okay? I kept my receipts, and I brought them back, and that's reimbursable.
Right, the way he was saying that, he said have it pre-approved, that's, I understand that.
Hold on a second.
I'm just asking a question.
Now, no, can I finish though?
Yes, sir.
That's why, that's why we, it's okay to pre-approve, because my money for paying for the taxi or your money for Uber can be reimbursed when you bring the receipts back to the city secretary.
I heard him, I was very clear with his response.
Okay, well, when you said, how can you pre-approve something if you have a situation where you have to pay for Uber?
How would you know the cost upfront is what I'm saying?
You don't have to know the cost upfront, Councilwoman Moses. All you need to do is have your receipts from the Uber or taxi. Hold on to your receipts.
Well, thank you.
And return them back to the city secretary, and you will be reimbursed your money. That's all you have to do.
Thank you for that explanation.
Can I speak?
Because, hold on, Ron, I'm not finished. Okay, so, so that's, that's one thing that you have a concern about, right, Councilman Moses? That was one thing you had a concern about, right?
So, she follows up again.
Okay, okay, so...
That was it.
Okay, so we cleared that, so you can pre-approve, we can pre-approve a trip based on if you have to, have to travel by Uber or taxi, okay? So, and the next, and the next thing that you're saying, talking about the classes. Okay, when we register, they register us for certain classes. Councilwoman Moses, all those classes that we, they register us for, anything outside of that, that information is still, could be, is still in the classes that's, that's pre-registered for. All, they look at this and say, all the knowledge that we need as a councilperson, all the information that we need, it's in the, it's in the classes that, that are registered for. So anything outside, it's like, I have, I've been around a long time, anything outside, I've pretty much been able to find that information without paying for the course, find that information in the courses to free, not to free, they're not free, they pay for already through registration. They are in those classes that we pre-registered for. Most of all, information that I need, that we need are in those, those are classes that we pre-registered for.
No, the first time...
So, so, I mean, anytime...
Thank you for a class a week now.
Anytime something is, else is outside those classes, Councilwoman Moses?
Like you freezing, so...
You can pretty much look at it, but you can make a decision about that information is in the registered classes that's already given to us.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Scott, for that explanation. But the first time I attended N L C, they had what they call N L C University. So I wasn't aware, the classes, the registration fee did not include those N L C University classes. I was a new council member and wanted to know more about what I, even though I'd worked for the city on this, when I attended the first N L C session, I wanted more clarity on those university classes, especially on economic development, when we were, we were in the timeframe where the E D C was building homes. So I wanted to know more about economic development on a, on a larger scale. That was my first time, I was newly elected, and so you had to, they were not included, those, that class, and the two classes that I did take, I called back to ask Sheri about them, or Kristy, I don't remember at this time, that was three years ago, or twenty fifteen. And so I, they were not included in the registration for clarity purposes, and for the citizens that are listening. They were not included on the schedule. They told me that those classes were a fee. And so I wanted to understand what we were doing with economic development downtown with building homes, and they were collaborating and showing you and instructing council members and other elected officials on how economic development worked for your city. And so I called back to see if I could take that class, and I was given the card, the, whatever they did to pay, Sheri got on and paid for that. Well, that helped me to understand our community and what we were doing economically downtown with building those new homes in that area, we just passed that law in sixteen, I think it was twenty sixteen, about the homes that we were building and revitalization. And so that helped me to understand all of that. It was not included in my original packet. So N L C University was something that I had to ask, could I take that class and pay for it? Because I think it would have helped me to understand much better what the city was dealing with at that time. So no, it was not included, it was, it was an extra one hundred and fifty-three dollars.
And that, and that same information, Councilwoman Moses, I'm telling you, majority of that same information are given to us on the classes that we registered.
I understand that for you, I didn't see it on the schedule, it was not offered.
Well, I'm saying, because like I said, you know, been here longer than anybody else, most, most of the information in those classes, they are given in the registration classes.
And I understand, but this one was not, this one was not.
So like I said, they are mostly given. Those two things that you had concern, I thought I would express my, my, my experience, my experience.
I do want the citizens to know, when I got, what I encountered when, upon becoming a new councilperson and trying to educate myself, some of us may have all the knowledge going on council, that's fine, but some of us don't. And we want to make sure that we're representing our city to the best of our knowledge, and that's an individual decision. That is not a collaborative group decision. So I'm sorry, I'm going to say that because everybody's not the same, we don't learn the same rate, and...
We understand that, Councilwoman Moses, that we are different. What we talking about is, I'm, what I'm explaining to you that that same information, because you was not aware of it, I'm explaining to you that been on council for nine years, that information is given into the classes that's registered now. Because you didn't find it, I understand you did not find it, but I'm saying...
I just said I didn't find it, it wasn't offered.
Well, you said it wasn't offered.
There was not an economic revitalization class offered, and that you had to pay for the N L C University classes that were different.
Well, you know what, Councilwoman Moses, one thing about that is this, I think it's a good idea for us to pre-approve things.
Yes, sir.
Therefore, we understand what you're doing, what you, what's given to you before you go to the conference.
And that can be done.
Hold on for a second, and if a situation like this come about, then we'll discuss them. You discussed, we'll discuss them, but, and if these situations don't come about, we shouldn't, I mean, if they're not needed, we shouldn't do it. I think that if we pre-approve this, pre-approve it, everybody bring what they need to do, and we look at it, then the council look at it, and okay. And if you come up some situations, Councilwoman Moses, I don't think the council will be closed-minded to the point where if you needed this, this class, we would say you, say no to it, if you needed it, okay? So that's, that's no reason for not to pre-approve it.
I'm saying don't pre-approve it, but I think we have to look, I was unaware.
I understand, well, look, you just finished talking. I'm just saying this, Councilwoman Moses, if there are any way that you need this class, a class necessary to help you become a better councilperson, you know, bring it to, bring it to the council.
Yes, sir, sure will, definitely do that.
Okay.
Okay, but I'm not, I'm not in a, let me make sure I'm clear too. I'm not in adverse of making sure that we are pre-approved anything. I just want to see how the plans... I just wanna see how the plan's going to work. Well, I'm gonna ask questions so I can be fully aware of what I'm voting on. And I want clarity.
Don't ask questions, Councilman Moses, but that's, that's why this is a discussion. And we in discussion, I'm sharing, I'm sharing my experience. As a councilmember, been on this council for nine years about the traveling, about, about the taxi to you, Uber. Then I'm explaining to you that you can be reimbursed. Then I'm explaining to you that majority of the classes that are in. The pre-register, the registration, registered classes that we registered to, majority of those class have the same information. It's sometimes, Councilman Moses, those conferences about making money. So they set up classes to make money. And I'm saying that same information is in the some, most of the classes that we register for, that information is in. I went to a lot of classes and look at somebody wanna charge me to go on their class. I go up to another class and I get the same information. It's because you, like you said, maybe you didn't see it or you didn't ask, you did not spend, I understood it because I've been going to them a long time. And I'm just letting you know that. A lot of the information, Councilman Moses, before I think about spending taxpayer dollars. I think I would try to find that information through the classes already registered. If you can't, and like I said, Councilman Moses. I don't think nobody on this council would wanna stop any council member from being, being, uh, having educated. To the point where it's gonna help them uh, uh, be a better council. It's all about why spend taxpayers' money. Because it's just a class that you wanna take.
Nobody should do that.
Okay, that's, well, that's what we talking about. That's what we talking about.
Pre-approving the fees for a council member. And I, I think that that's fine with me. I, I don't care if they pre-approve it. I'm just asking questions about things that I know that I've encountered that I wanted answered to. And I, I, that's a discussion, right?
And I'm sharing it with you. So I, I, I've shared my, my, my part with you on the question that you had questioned about.
And I appreciate that.
Okay, you're welcome.
You know, you know, I started, you know, that's why I put this on the agenda. And, and, and believe it or not, I'm glad, I'm glad you did say that, Charlotte. And I'm glad that we are talking. The citizens got to hear this. Citizens has to understand how we all feel. And now ever, they're gonna get to understand how these things come about. And that's exactly, this dialogue has went. I'm just glad that I wasn't the only one talking. And.
Yes.
Everybody get to hear what everybody got to say. But exactly what you said is the reason we're here today.
And I'm glad.
The citizens, the citizens are the one, you know. And you notice I said when I started that, no council member currently has done anything. That councilmembers hasn't done in the past. I, I gave an example with the mayor trip where he went. In advance to be on the committee and the board, okay? It was done before. Like you said, this is the thing that the citizens need to understand so they could really understand how we all do business. One thing is, every time we've left on the NLC conference. We always start out going to the conference. But what happened is, city secretary listening and she can confirm. Anything other than what's covered in the restrict, they, you have to call back. And then when you call back, she said, okay, because you at the conference. And you paid. But what's happening. No council member had a problem with that. I didn't like it, but I never said you can't. But what I have a problem with now is citizens seeing discrepancies. And now they are complaining about it. So what we as councilmembers have to do, and they're gonna see this discussion. Because we police ourselves. So either we understand their plight and what they're saying. And take necessary action, or they gonna see what we do and they gonna hold us individually accountable. Because. Because at the end of the day, we all know. That we can go somewhere and we can see something that we didn't know existed, but want to do it. But we're not talking about having a choice to do it now. You're talking about now. Your choice is gonna cost more money. And in this particular case. No one knows. That's like come, when we do the pre-approval. If I got a problem with what you saying, I'm gonna address it then. Citizens are gonna hear it. And citizens gonna see how the vote go and see what you paying for, okay? So, of all the procedures we talked about, one thing we need to do is. Approve travel in advance. The city secretary must be very specific. With what she brings to this council. If you're gonna bring. A request for a council member to go to the NLC conference in this cause. That is what the council approves. Then you should not be able to call back to a city secretary. And ask her for anything now that wasn't approved by the council. So you see now. If you want to go something and it came before us requesting it then, citizens gonna see it then.
I would pay for it myself. If I wanted it that bad, I would pay for it myself. And I think I should, if I'm, it's gonna educate me. And it's gonna help me out, I would, I would pay for it. And about the knowledge. I'm, it's not, it's not, I'm not concerned about the city paying for it. If I think that I need it. And it's gonna affect me and what I'm doing, I'm willing to pay for it.
Wait a minute, what's the issue? Because that's what we talking about. That basically what it amount to. If you see it and you want it.
That's right. If it's gonna be a problem, I'll pay for it.
Hey, Councilwoman, we're trying to get all on one sheet of music so that the city secretary. Can hear how we are getting this straight, so that the citizens. Don't be calling or complaining and citizens, this need to be transparent. So when you say you're going to NLC, if NLC is three days. And the request says this is your registration fee and this is what you're gonna cost. Once we leave for travel. Anytime we gonna be deviate from that, it must be a reimbursable item. If it's not a reimbursable item. And it's not approved by council, therefore you know you gotta pay for it. And if we do that. Now, what I'm talking about is transparency to all citizens. Because from now on, when we travel. They gonna know what we going and everything we gonna do. And how much it's gonna cost. So when we go, say we go to NLC conference and it's four of us going. They gonna see forward prices. And the only deviation you're known to have from there is for instance, like. Councilman Scott, now we always ride, so he won't pay no transportation. So here it's gonna be lower. But see, when they say why he's low, this, then everybody say, well. And believe it, they ain't gonna never question nothing that's saving them money, okay? It's just spending their money. What the mayor did, it's been done before. It's a practice. We need to correct the practice. The way we could correct the practice is simply. All travel by council is pre-approved. Once is approved. You don't call back and get anything added because that's not approved by council. So anything has to be approved by council. It's no calling back. Cuz that's where the price difference come into, because everything you do. Have been calling back. That's where all the price difference come into. You call back. We want to eliminate the call back.
There's one thing that our citizens need to understand, Councilman Moses, and everybody, Councilmen is this. When we pre-approve something. Okay, and we get the knowledge of what, what each councilmember is doing and what, what you are registering for. Citizens need to understand, no matter how we may dis- disagree with maybe something coming up. When it comes down to voting for that, for, voting for that, that tab. No matter if I disagree with it or not, we stuck with it. We gotta pay for it anyway. Okay, so, so that's why the pre-approved is good because therefore we can discuss these issues and take care of them before it happens. Because, let me finish. So, so when it, so instead of it happening. And then it's brought back to us and we are not agreeable to some of the things that occurred. No matter how we don't disagree, we still got to pay the tab. We stuck, the city stuck with the tab. So we still got to pay the tab. So citizens need to understand that with that process not pre-approved it, if we don't pre-approve it. No matter how we discuss and disagree with, when it come back to us, we still have to vote to pay for it.
All right, uh, mayor, question, mayor. Uh, some of the additional costs, and I've been listening, writing things down and I have both foes. Uh, airline, the times that you fly, going to NLC. You won't have the same things going on if you were in uh, going to T, uh, TML, which is state conference, depending on where it's at. And I can understand, uh, Councilman Doucette and Councilman Scott riding together. His, his uh. Amount may be a little lower because they ride together, but however, you know, I was one that was in a national conference and um. Uh, I had to take Uber back and forth from the hotel. And that wasn't something that, you know, anticipated cost. Because I didn't make my hotel arrangements that was done by either the secretary's office or Christie. So I can see that, but you know, when we talk about the proven authority, if we have four councilmen's actually going to a conference. Who's gonna be, and, and, and I think Council, Councilman Scott alluded to it, you know, we can be open-minded about um. Approving, pre-approving. And I'm okay with that. So, you know, what is the, you know, I was on the committee along with Councilwoman Frank. Uh, and Councilman Doucette, that we streamline the travel policy so we can address a lot of those issues. And I thought we kinda. Uh, addressed some of those issues. So today, my question is, what are we planning on doing? Uh, and how we planning on addressing these issues uh, uh, with the travel policy? Is, is it that you wanting to bring an additional amendment to the travel policy and we uh, take action today on it? Or is it that we wanting to come to the committee again and bring it before the whole council? And the only reason I'm saying that, Councilman Jones is not here to give his input on. Um, you know, what's his thoughts on, on this travel policy. And I think if we're gonna make a major decision like this on the travel policy. Uh, maybe we should have a, you know, all the councilpersons here. Or is it that you wanted to make an amendment now to address. Uh, some of those issues that we don't have in the policy current, uh, council.
Let me just.
What I was gonna do, what I was gonna do, Councilman, uh, Ken Law. I wanted us to approve directing the city attorney to bring back an amendment to us. Whereby, uh, we're gonna require council to pre-approve travel from now on, okay? And like I said, when you approve, pre-approve travel, you're pre-approved. For a conference and what the knowns are. The known is always, one. When the council starts, cuz they send us a, an agenda and a territory, okay? Also, the costs, the registration fee, they telling you this is what they're gonna charge us. And they have all these sessions outlined for us. Transportation either is where we drive or where we fly. Or in any cases, we know we can only, we can take the cheap, we cannot get reimbursed for, for the cheapest motor traffic. So that's not an issue whether you wanna fly or drive. That's not an issue. The ordinance says you gonna get paid only for the. Lesser of the two. So there's nothing. That you could possibly be stuck with by having it pre-approved. But what it does. Is stop a council member from getting to a conference and decides. I want to do this, or I want to do that, calling the city secretary and saying, I wanna do this. I wanna do that. Well, now, the citizens don't know what you requested. Because what you requested, the citizens saw what we requesting. And they see what it's gonna cost. You know, there's things about Uber, we get to hotels. You may not have transportation. You may take a shuttle or taxi to the hotel. Those are reimbursable expenses. But when those expenses. Are tallied up and they come up on this agenda. See that diff- difference and now on that, but if you look at it, they'd be able to see it, okay? But the problem we have is like I said, when we say we going to the NLC conference. What the citizens are looking at is this person were gone for four days, this one were gone for five days. This one were gone for three days. And they saying, they went to the same conference. But citizens are only concerned with their tax dollars. So what we have to do is. We have to understand that when we make a request. We make that request on what's for us. We should not leave with the intent. Or with a knowledge or understanding that we could call back. If, if we see something, we could call back. We gotta get out of there because it may be okay with council members. But if you listen to what the citizens are saying, that is our problem. The mayor, he's getting, he getting beat to death for five days. But you know what? It was the practice. Had we put this approved before you go. Any question we had would have been discussed. Not only that, but it would have been approved. Okay, so it wasn't that the mayor went and done his, now he coming back for us to approve. So I'm just looking at this from what I've heard in art for us, one. To ensure that we don't get slammed by the citizens for doing something that had always been done. Two, is that citizens understand, we don't go to a conference and start attending or doing what we want to do. At an added cost. And not only that, but by pre-approved, citizens are now gonna see before we do. Which gonna bring about transparency. If we establish transparency. Then citizens are then going to say, oh yeah, it was on agenda. Yeah, they did that. What it's gonna bring, confidence and trust that we are managing their money when we go on these trips. Because right now, trust me, ain't none of you sitting here that cannot say. That there are citizens that no longer have trust and confidence in us managing money when we go on trips. Therefore, in order to police ourselves, we must take action that we can put them back. To trusting us and having confidence. And the way we do that, we do it transparent. So what I'm saying, you wanna go somewhere? Is a pre-approved trip, have the city secretary to bring the travel requests before the full council. And council road. The citizens will see that request. They will see about how much you gonna cost. Because you only can approve and approximately cost. Because if the situation occur like Councilwoman Moses said, where she had to pay for transportation in Uber, then she's reimbursable. You know, so actually, at the end of the day, her cost gonna cost more. But you'll see it on the trip. And it wasn't something that occurred before, okay? The mayor, the mayor had a car. Well, guess what? If it came before us, anybody got a problem. We could talk. Any citizen got a complaint, they could say it. See, this is not about. Uh, it's about us policing ourselves and doing things to bring trust and confidence back and get an understanding. Of what the taxpayers should pay for and what they shouldn't. Because our job is not to serve at conferences. We serving for these citizens here in the city. And their money is the one that we're using to go on trip. Just the fact that we are. I said it the last time, we are privileged to travel because this citizen can cut it out, okay? Some cities do not allow people to travel. Some cities allow them to travel maybe once a year. So what I'm saying is, well, when it come to travel. It's not a thing that you automatically get because you're a councilperson. Our citizens got a lot of saying this. And right now. We just gotta get the trust and comfort back from citizens. And the way we do that is have an open discussion like we have today. And you know, it's, it's good to bring out all the points, good to debate, good that we all here. It's not personal. But the thing that we have to understand is, what we decide.
Let me, let me, can I say something?
Then Ron talk first.
I have, I have listened to the discussion that's taken place. And I think I could help the city secretary and the staff who's involved. To help create that transparency that the council is talking about. What I could do and what I will recommend, I will create two forms that are necessary. One estimated and two final. So when we get to travel for council members. We will get a form that will be presented to council as what as to what the estimated cost will be. Because I don't think council sees on a line to line item what the estimated cost will be. And as long as council has agreed to bringing travel to them prior to to traveling. We will present you with that, but let me work with staff. I'm hearing that council is asking us to work with the city secretary's office. And with the administrative um individual who is responsible for preparing travel. I could do that. We could put something in place that would assist in creating the transparency. And regaining the trust of our citizens. If I I will work to get that done with you before the next council. Is that okay?
That's okay.
Let me take care of it. I'll handle it for you, okay?
I'm clear, you do not want an ordinance.
Okay, uh, no, uh, when you work with the city manager, I I don't.
City attorney as well.
Required until you pass it by ordinance.
I just wanted to say, counsel, that we already have a pre approval travel form that we use for. Any travel outside of the designated conferences that the committee set forth in the ordinance already. So we do have that. It's a matter of just applying it to all travel.
If it needs to be tweaked, we'll tweak it and we'll present it to council. It will be open and transparent. Council has a fair idea as to what the estimated cost is line by line item. So it's clear and yeah.
That that was my whole point that I wanted to make sure that we do because uh we have to ensure that. What we do now is something that the citizens understand. What we do and 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 you know, I think, I think uh it it was a good discussion. I'm glad I put it on there. Based on the time that we throw this around, I guess it was very important because it didn't take no over ten minutes, okay? So hopefully.
It's it's been fifty two minutes.
Yeah, well, well, oh, that's okay. I got eight more minutes, mayor.
No, 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 I'm talking next eight. Okay, this is what we have now and I I've listened to everyone. And what everyone to say and I believe my travel probably detonated this or caused this to happen. But I really want everyone to know and citizens who are listening and even citizens who may have had a concern. In no way that I abuse any travel funds or that I abused any trust. Now, there has been intinuations and innuendos that I went a day or two before and stayed a day or two later. The conference actually began on. Uh, the the actual date was March seventh. I traveled on March sixth. I I I've heard it said over and over again that you could travel the day before a conference. The conference began on March seventh and registration had begun on February. I mean, on Friday, March sixth, which was the day that I actually traveled to Washington. Now, it's also been said that conferences are over at twelve noon. That could be the case, but in this particular case, it wasn't. The our conference was actually over on that Wednesday at about actually about three thirty or four. And it called, it was a time that you actually had with the congressional uh uh delegation. As to what time you would probably end because they were giving appointments on that day. And I returned on Thursday, which was the following day after the conference had ended. That evening or that afternoon and it was actually that evening because a lot of folk didn't get back to the hotel until about. Maybe five thirty or sixty o'clock from Capitol Hill. So on those days and also with the N L C university, I. Made the differ with some of the uh uh information that's been passed on. That you could get this information that they are doing in the classes that you pay for, in the classes that are in in the bulk of the registration. That is not so. And what I've also learned is that. Council members, I mean, like the Councilman Scott, who's been there for nine years, had he attended. Uh, N L C university classes for over nine years, he would have some distinction now as some master council member. Because recognition is given to council persons all over the entire United States. Who actually sit in these classes and gather this type of information. So all I was doing and found out and it was approved or well, I yet it was already turned in. Prior to my taking this trip, as uh Councilman Doucette has been saying now, it just wasn't something that went to council. Prior to the trip, where you would actually know line by line everything that was happening. But in no way that I go or have I attended a meeting, got there and decided, even though I think. That what the citizens want, because if they put enough trust in each of us to vote for us. They would also put enough trust in us to have discretion and have the practice of good discretionary uh uh choices. That if we get somewhere and find out something, as Councilwoman Moses said, that would help us to be a better person. They, I don't think they would have a problem with that council person calling back to the city secretary. Who actually is the person in this particular situation to say, hey, there's something here that I can get some other information on. That wasn't on my original uh uh manifesto and I need to see if I can get this added on. That we would leave some form of latitude for this. I believe if you, and I don't mind being policed and we should be able to be. Over each other and watch what each other does, but at the same time, I don't think that we should make that a practice. To just be that we are so untrusting of other individuals that you would not extend. Their courtesy of latitude to an individual to make a this this a nice discretionary choice about something. That would be beneficial to this community while those individuals who pay the taxes and paying for your trips. Would be able to benefit in the best way. So with that being said, I I have no problem. I don't think anyone else does. I also agree with Councilman uh Ken Law that maybe we should have a full council where everyone would be aware and be a part of. The city manager said he had the idea of working with staff. City secretary says she has what she needs that that he needs to actually probably make this happen. And maybe at the next meeting or the following uh 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 ensuing meeting, we can actually uh uh resolve this matter. And if there is an amendment or something that would go in the form of an ordinance, we would be ready to carry that through. So is that good with the entire group?
Mayor, mayor, one one comment, one comment. N L C did not start on the sixth.
Okay, sir, I'm not, I just beg differ with you. I have the booklet here. It tells me Friday, March sixth, five P M. Registration and ask N L C open and then N L C university information desk from five P M until seven P M. So that means that it began on the sixth. Now, what information you had? I'm not sure if I you got it and who you got it from and what information they gave you, sir. I have it right here. I was an attendance there, okay? So I don't think that's an arguable point. When it begun and and that on the following morning, the actual sessions began. And that's what's right here in this booklet, as you can see, which is the official document for the N L C. That I attended in Washington, D C, sir.
Mayor, that's what that's point I was making earlier today when I said that previous mayor with T M L. That's the same thing that you talking about here and that's what citizens and you need to understand when you bring it back before us. The actual conference was from the eighth through the eleventh. What you're attending are board meetings and committees.
Okay, sir, but to you and 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 what you're doing, you're just continually making innuendos that are not even uh 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 documented. Uh, the actual deal began Saturday, March seventh, registration again, N L C university information desk. Leading together for boot camps, which these are all the sessions that had begun at nine A M on Saturday morning.
That's what they were offering, mayor. That's what I'm talking about when I said. If 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 you go back and Google the actual conference and not only that, but we all these communities.
You're talking about the opening session. The opening session is not until a day or so later. And this is what you want to know and what we're talking about.
But I'm talking about, and that's normally what we attend, okay?
You have a whole, a whole plethora of knowledge that you have missed because you just wanna go to an opening session.
Mayor, don't say, um, what I'm talking about is not having fifty nine hundred dollars. So that's what I'm talking about.
You and I talk, let's talk about that ourselves. We don't have to bore these people with that. You can come in and you know I have an open door. And you know, you could have spoken with me about this two or three weeks ago, sir, and you know that you could have. So look at why can't we not continue with the meeting we have.
Wait, 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 when you, when you, when you talk to me, right? I don't mind going to talk to you, but don't sit down doing in new innuendos, okay?
Okay, uh, you wanna make your motion, Councilman Doucette to have.
No, no, I I'm not gonna make a motion. Uh, I'm gonna give the city manager the opportunity to get with staff. And the city attorney and bring back the uh the proposal. What what I do want to come back to us is for pre approval.
You wanna do it today or you wanna wait until we get to.
No, no, we don't need anything today. Manager is gonna take care of.
Once he comes back, it'll be on the agenda item for our previous for our uh upcoming meeting.
That that's exactly what my intent is, mayor. Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you, sir. Now, let us move to, uh, we have no public hearing. Uh, we should have begun at six o'clock. We're about an hour behind. Okay, unfinished business there is none.